Call the Hudson Common Council meeting for February 25th to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? In the absence of Mayor Burchill, as President of the Council, I'll be running this meeting. However, as the Alderman in the Sixth District, I will not be giving up my voting rights. I will retain my voting rights for this meeting. And one agenda item, the applications for operator licenses, will be removed from the consent agenda item, and we will discuss it. First, are there any comments or suggestions from citizens present who would like to make any comments about anything that is not on the agenda? Anyone here at all like to speak? Okay. If there is no one here, we'll get into the agenda. And first, we have the consent agenda items.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of February 11th, 2013. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $12,297,247.57. A detailed description is available in the Clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. To approve the issuance of a taxicab driver's license to Laura Lee K. Zimer through June 30th, 2013. To approve the issuance of a special event permit to mark bongers for the annual Beaufort de Badger race event from 4:30 a.m. to 12 o'clock p.m. on August 10th, 2013, in Lakefront Park. To approve the appointment of Brian J. Bouchard as agent for Chipotle Mexican Grill at 888, Suite 888, at 1021 Pearson Drive. And issue a revised liquor license contingent on surrender of the current license held by the establishment. To approve the Celebrate the Difference 5K Run-Walk to be held April 6th, 2013, at 10 o'clock a.m., beginning and ending at Willow River Elementary School. To place on file the quarterly report of the Water Utility Director, the monthly report of the Finance Officer, the February 12th, 2013 minutes of the Public Utility Commission, the February 6th, 2013 minutes of the Advisory Joint Fire Board, and the February 20th, 2013 minutes of the San Craig EMS Commission. That is all.
Move for approval.
Second.
T. Winkle?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morsett?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Hoggatt?
Yes.
Vanslo?
Yes.
Applications for operators licenses. As we pull this in the consent agenda item, we'll consider all of those. We have approved the issuance of regular operators licenses for the period 2/2613 to 6:3014 to Jordan Castor and Sarah E. Hartstein.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions?
Any reason they weren't on the consent agenda?
Yeah, the reason it was pulled is that there was a denial at the end of this, and that denial wants to be addressed by one of the people present.
I got you.
So there was a motion and a second. Then any discussion? Any questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consider the temporary operator's license to be used on March 8, 2013, at the Knights of Columbus Fish Fire Event at St. Patrick's Church to Charles W. Silver.
Go ahead.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There's the denial of an operator's license to Ashley Nicole McGee, 1104 Fifth Street, Hudson, Wisconsin, due to her history of alcohol-related violations within the past year. Ashley, if you're present, would you like to speak?
Yes, I will.
Okay. Please go to the podium and just state your name and your address again. Up at the podium.
Ashley Nicole McGee, and I live at 1104 Fifth Street. And when I turned in this application, I was in a rush to get to work. And I wasn't thinking that when I had to write down violations, that I had to say anything alcohol-related. And I've had two in the last year, but I have changed so much since then. I turned 18 in January, and I graduated early, and I've been working full-time ever since. And I graduated with a B honor roll, and I was on the A honor roll my whole high school. I was in sports, volunteered. And so it's very unlike me to not write that on the application. That was a very bad accident, and I apologize to everyone here for this inconvenience. But I've been working at Azul Tequila for a few months, and I'm a waitress there, and I would love the opportunity to be a bartender. And I'm just so...
For college?
I'd like to save up money for college because I would love to do something in the medical field. That's been my dream since I was a child. And I've grown up here in Hudson my whole life. My Grandma Bertha Fenner, she owns Dibbo's. And so I was always there as a kid, and I know that you have to be incredibly responsible as a bartender. Of course, you have to check their ID, and you have to, you should ask them some questions about their ID, too, to make sure it's not fake. And watch them as they're drinking, make sure they don't take too much alcohol in, because if they become too intoxicated, they could harm themselves or drive or do something horrible like that. So I always make sure that I try to space the drinks out, and if I see someone that's becoming too intoxicated, I'll cut them off. And I've had to do that once at Dibbo's. But yeah, I definitely know that you need to be responsible as a bartender, and it's a responsibility that I'm willing to uphold. Thank you.
Questions?
That's your mother there?
Yes. This is my mother, Vanda McGee.
I'll move to approve giving her an operator's license.
I'll second that.
I think she deserves another chance. Her mom's here, obviously, you know, it's not like, you know, I just think, prove it to us, you know? Prove it to yourself, so...
Yeah. Thank you.
I'm glad you came. A lot of times, people don't come, so it's very important.
That's my thought, John, is that most people wouldn't come here to talk, to address us, so...
A lot of courage.
Thank you.
And I'll probably be the only one voting against it, and I'm sorry, but we've voted in the past when there's been similar numbers of violations within, all three of these have been within the last year. And I like, it's great that you're working, and at the same time, I like to think that we sort of don't set people up to fail. And so maybe with a little bit more time and distance from these violations, that it might make more sense for you to be serving in a bartender role. So for that reason, I'll be voting against it, but I wish you the best in whatever job you end up in, so...
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, I guess I just have only one concern, and that it's been a very short time since your last violation. And while you're doing very well, and I do respect the fact that you came here and spoke to the Council, I'd like to see there be a little bit more time where you have a chance to prove yourself in the workforce and demonstrate to us over a longer period of time that you understand the responsibilities that you're given and that you can handle those responsibilities. So I have that concern. I think you're well on your way, and I think if there had been more time, I would be probably more in favor of this. But I'm concerned about the short, it's only been about six or seven months now since your last violation, and I'm not sure yet that I would want to move forward with that for me. But I do respect what you're doing. I think you're on the right track. I think your mom is helping you, and I'm all in favor of what you're doing, and hope we should the best. So we have a motion, and we have a second for approving the operator's license. Any further discussion? Any questions? Anybody want to...
I just want to say why I made the motion, besides what I said that, I mean, and I agree with Lori with some of the, that we've turned down others, but I don't recall them being 18 years old or under, I don't recall if they were, maybe they were underage drinking tickets. But much of what Kurt and John said, the courage to come here today has, is encouraging to me, and I think that with your, with just your high school, I mean, I remember what it was like in high school. You were doing very well, and you let loose a little, and I think that with your mom being here and being supportive of you, I think that means a great deal, too, so that's why I made that motion.
Could I also say one more thing? Sorry. I just want to really enforce the fact that I have grown up so much in the last six months. I've had a steady boyfriend since last spring, and all I want to do is work and spend time with him. And I have no desires to go out drinking because it's just so unhealthy and bad for you, and bad things happen. And I just, I was just more immature back in the day, and I didn't understand my, like, the consequences that can come from stuff like that. But I have grown up so much and learned so much in the last six months and year or two.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second for approval of the operator's license for Ashley. Any further discussion? Any more questions? All those in favor of the approval of the license? Say aye.
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 All those opposed? Aye. Motion carries four to two. So you have, you're getting an operator's license, is what that means.
Thank you so much.
Application of the Noodle Shop Company, Wisconsin Incorporated, for Class B beer and Class C wine license, Noodles &amp; Company at 1055 Pearson Drive.
My name is Michelle Brockman, and I am here to represent Noodles &amp; Company. I'm going to be the general manager at that location. We, I don't know, did you guys have questions about, do you want me to just talk about our alcohol policy?
What would the Council wish here?
I don't have any questions. I'm very excited that you're coming in.
When are you opening?
Yeah, right.
I want my Parmesan noodles.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Yeah, second. Sorry.
Okay, motion and a second to approve. Are there any further questions? Are there any further discussion regarding the license?
Do you know when you will be open? I'm hungry, I'm sorry.
I believe April 2nd is our opening date for now, so...
Right, as long as the motion and second is contingent upon successful building and fire inspections?
Yeah.
And to receive a copy of the restaurant license.
Yep, it's fine.
So is that okay with your motion?
Yep.
You have the contingent on that? Okay. Motion and a second with those contingencies. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Application of Randy Morsett II for Class A beer and Class A liquor license, Setters Liquor at 1801 Ward Avenue, Suite 260 in Plaza 94. Council President, I recuse myself. Okay. So we, any discussion? Any questions?
Is this a transfer of the, okay.
It's a transfer from, I believe, Northland's.
It's not technically a transfer.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's a new, yeah.
That's right. The SSG Corporation will surrender their license, and a new license would be issued.
Okay.
And that was the only thing that I had as a contingency.
Yeah, I'm thinking he's not deserving.
I'll move to approve the application.
Chief Jensen, do you have any concerns?
I'll move to approve the application for retail for Setters Liquor.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Approval of Cedar Ridge Apartment, multifamily rental, did I miss something? Approval of Cedar Ridge Apartment, multifamily rental housing project, and Hudson Housing Authority issuance of $7 million in revenue bonds, Resolution Number 313.
As explained in the Finance Committee, this, similar resolution was approved about a year ago. The resolution is for the issuance of revenue bonds for renovations to the existing 72-unit, 236-unit buildings at Red Cedar Apartments on Nemecoggin Street. It is assisted family housing, low for low and modern income persons. Again, the City Council approved this last year. The Housing Authority needed to conduct a public hearing this year. That was done about a month ago, and they authorized approval. And the Common Council now needs to reconsider because it's been a one-year period since, and if it goes beyond a year, that needs to be reapproved. There are two individuals from Dominion here tonight, Ron Mall and John Green. If you have any specific questions for them, but it would take Approval of Resolution 3-13.
So we were told in Finance there were no changes to the application, so it's essentially what we approved a year ago.
Correct.
So do we need to suspend the rules if we, I move to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion to suspend rules, seconded. Roll call.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morsett?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Hoggatt?
Yes.
Vanslo?
Yes.
T. Winkle?
Yes.
I move to approve Resolution 3-13.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, consider proposed amendment to premises description for the Class A retail liquor license of Historic Casanova Liquor LLC, 236 Cooley Road.
My name is Ryan Carey. I'm the attorney that's representing John and Janet Gaffer, who are present here with me this evening. They own both the Casanova Liquor Store as well as the Nova Restaurant. The first agenda item to consider with respect to my clients is the A license, or in other words, the liquor store. And the request there is actually quite simple. The license as issued, the A license as issued, I should say, includes both what is commonly referred to as a liquor store, which you can see on your map, which is the left side of the building if you're looking at it the long way. But it also includes the cave. The cave is A-licensed right now. And so the only requested change with respect to this first premises amendment is to remove from the A license the cave. Because as the state of Wisconsin mandates through its statutes, a premises cannot have both an A and B license. So that was something we needed to correct, and that was essentially something we stumbled upon when we were going through the process to amend the B license, which I'll get to in a moment. So that's the only change on the A license.
I move to approve the Class A proposed revision to the premises description.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Any questions?
I just have one thing. You know, part of having a liquor license is, that we've been struggling with is the sign ordinance, and I know there's been a lot of issues surrounding the sign ordinance and Casnovas, and I would just hope that maybe we could start dialing back and following the sign ordinance if we're going to, you know, go through with this process, because that's one of the stipulations, to have the liquor license. So, I recall.
Well, every business needs to comply
Right.
with the sign ordinance.
And as they come up for things, I probably will bring that up every time, but it's, you know, they just happen to be up. So there's, you know, something I want to mention. I'm not, I'm not going to say vote no. I just want it to be recognized.
Any further discussion? Any further questions? All right, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consider proposed amendment to premise description for Class A retail liquor license of Historic, oh, wait a minute, we did that one already. We don't want to do that again. We got past that.
B, Class B.
Consider proposed amendment to premise description for Class B liquor license of the Nova of Hudson LLC, 236 Cooley Road.
Attention now is turned from A license to the B license, or specifically from the liquor store to the restaurant. And the only requested change is to the premises description relate, really to the left side of your, the map, if you would find Exhibit B1 in your materials. Same, same diagram was used for the A license, although we've changed the shaded areas to relate to the B license. The restaurant you see off to your right side, which is currently under a B license. The cave, which you see on the left side of your page, also currently under a B license. And so again, the only two changes are, one, extending out the B license to permanently include, or include at least as the license is issued, what is referred to as Patio 2. The thin line that sort of curves is the hill line, and so where the cave ends and out for about 15 feet by 45 feet, the request is to allow the Nova to use that Patio 2 area when they are having private events in the cave, such as birthday parties and et cetera. So that's the first requested change to the premises description. That would have a fence around it when in use and be monitored, and a licensed operator would be out in the cave serving patrons. The second change, requested change is that to add for one day only, April 27th, from 10 a.m. to 10 p.m., extended B license area for that limited time period to what is commonly or what is referred to as the fenced parking area. This would be for the annual Beer Fest that the Nova has held. This would allow the Nova to, I guess, increase the number of tickets they can sell and have a larger area for their patrons to enjoy the Beer Fest. There's a narrative behind this page that describes the safety and security measures that would be employed to make sure it's a well-run event. We've described where the exits and entrances will be, and I think alleviated the concerns on a safety level. So that's the request from our client.
Should we, should we separate the temporary license for the 27th from the permanent?
No.
Because he's asking for a permanent patio on the extension there, and then he's asking for a temporary...
Well, but it needs to be part of his license.
Okay.
Because with this Class B, it needs to be part of the Class B license. It will be noted on the license that that is just for that one day.
Okay, so considering together would be...
Yes, because there is no separate Class B temporary license.
Okay. Got that clear up?
I just have a legal question, following up on Mary's comment. Is there any way to link these, to make, you know, approval of the license contingent upon compliance with the city's sign ordinance?
Well, it's always not contingent, but licensed premises and all businesses need to comply with the ordinance. I don't know their citation history. I mean, I think that the means for enforcing the sign ordinance is primarily through the citations and enforcing that ordinance. I don't think mid-license you can alter their license based on
Okay.
sign ordinance violations. And to be honest, I don't even know whether there has been enforcement action taken against them for the sign ordinance.
Has there, has there been any problem?
Marty? No, there hasn't been any.
I'm going to move to approve the amendment to premises description for the Class B liquor license of the Nova of Hudson.
Okay.
Now, there's been no citations issued. Typically, we remind the applicants for liquor license about the sign ordinance. On occasion, there has been a sign put on Second Street. I've removed it a couple times. So if we find it, we typically would remove it, either the police department or myself. No, it shouldn't, that sign should not be out there, so...
Okay.
Other than that, I mean, it's not been a significant issue.
Okay. I just hope we don't see the sign out there again, because I don't like when city staff has to take time to take signs down that shouldn't be there in the first place. Okay.
I'll second John's motion. Motion and a second.
Marty, have you looked at any of this through, I mean, I know that they have, it's an annual thing for them, but now that it's expanding, have you looked at it as far as a safety issue? Because it didn't come through safety, so...
I have had some email back and forth with Catherine. I've taken a look at their plans. The event has been huge in the past, but has not caused us any problems with the fence that they're putting up in the parking lot. I don't anticipate any more problems.
Okay.
Are there some contingencies recommended by the building inspector and fire chief?
I have a question just on basic layout. You know, it's just unique, I suppose, that they're, they're two separate areas. And, you know, I know that they've told us that there's going to be a licensed operator there, but can we enforce that?
Well...
The fact that, what if they have one here? But these are really the same premise.
No, they, the statute is there has to be licensed operators, or they need to be under the supervision, which means visual, they need to, within sight of a licensed operator, so that, in my opinion, obviously, a licensed operator inside the restaurant would not be able to see and supervise an unlicensed server
Yeah, Kurt.
in the cave or the patio.
I can first say, being at that event, there's more inadequate licensed folks at the door in each part of the building.
Well, and I guess I'm speaking of more than just that event, because I'm sure that that pulls a lot of licensed people, but, you know, if it's going to be used for other events also, and, you know, a birthday party, and they can't get a licensed operator for that night, oh, but there's one over here. I mean, as long as the ordinance or the statute...
Well, it's state statute. It has to be under the supervision. And I think Mr. Carey addressed that at Finance. If you'd like to maybe repeat that.
Yeah, I'll just repeat what I, what I mentioned before for those who weren't obviously present, and that is that there will be a licensed operator present whenever alcohol is being served in these designated areas. And for instance, if there's a private event held in the cave, there is an actual portable bar typically brought out, and there'd be a licensed operator manning that location. And to be clear, just from past experience myself personally, you know, the activity or the patrons that are in the restaurant, there's no really relationship between those folks and what's going on in the cave and in the fenced-off area. They're going to be two separate and distinct events, if you will, on the cave side, and just your normal restaurant patrons on, in the restaurant itself.
Sure. No, I'm all good with it. It's unique because there's, it's separated.
The contingencies at the Finance Committee meeting were...
So the building inspector wanted to make sure that there would be gates in the fencing that will have panic hardware or be constantly monitored by staff so that they can be easily opened in an emergency situation. And if portable toilets are utilized for public restrooms, at least one accessible portable unisex restroom or two, or one men's and one women's portable restroom be provided. The fire inspector noted his concern that the exits not be obstructed in any way from the fenced area.
So those would be the contingencies.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Those okay with you, Jen?
Yeah, totally.
Are you guys okay with that?
Yeah, oh, yes. We, as we do, we work so well.
Okay, so there's a motion to approve with the contingencies. Did you second that, Randy?
Really did.
Motion and a second. Any questions? Any further questions? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Change of agent for Chipotle Mexican Grill, 1021 Pearson Drive, Hudson.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any questions? Any discussion?
No, I'm just getting hungry and thirsty, that's all.
Motion in a second. No further discussion? No questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Request to fill the part-time records account clerk position in the Hudson Fire Department.
My office assistant told me last Thursday that she'll be taking another position. I saw that vacates the part-time position that she's held. The position, she's had the position for about seven years. It's been very valuable for the fire department, and she in that position has been extremely valuable. And we hope our selection for a new person that went, goes as well as the last one. But I am asking for that position to be filled. There is one minor change in the job description in the area. It says work with the software. It has to go, be changed to Windows 7. Right now, it says Windows XP Pro. Just one minor change in the language in the job description. It's a .6... change in the language in the job description. It's a .6 position, 24 hours a week.
A move for approval.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Further questions, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Request to fill the full-time paramedic position, St. Correem S.
I think my person and Jim's person were in conspiracy, because also last Thursday I got notice that one of my full-time medics will be leaving. She just finished college in her degree, so she's moving on to her bigger and better job, I guess. So, just looking to get it filled and just asking your permission, so that way we can advertise and fill it.
I'll move for approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Further questions, further discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consider request of Halos of Hudson for fun walk-run in August, beginning at the Hudson High School and ending at Lakefront Park.
This came through public safety, but I don't know why it's not on consent. So has something changed, Marty?
Well, they didn't, they hadn't got a date settled yet through, they wanted August 10th, but that's when Gopher the Badger got in before they could reserve it. So they have now reserved the date of August 3rd will be their event. And that was the only reason it was taken off consent. Just wanted to give you the date.
Okay, so move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Unfinished Business 2013, user fees for Grandview Park. Tom, would you like to address that?
We asked for more information as far as...
Last council meeting, we were asked to try to separate some of the fees and revenues and expenditures for Grandview Park in general and for the ball fields. Those are on the second page. Second column talks about the expenditure summary. For the fields, we separated, it looks like it's about a little over $30,000. Concession restroom expenditures are about $1,872. General parks expenditures are $12,508. Then right below that is expenditure details, and I think that's what was requested at the last meeting.
So you suggested these increases, but Park Board passed it without any increases?
The Park Board requested that we keep all the fees the same as 2012.
But you suggested to consider slight increases.
Our lights, one, that was the biggest expenditure is the field lighting. And as you see, under the expend, expenditure detail is that the off months are, excuse me, for the five months, they're $73.90, and during the seven months that are being used for the fields are $12,686. Is that correct?
No.
Am I backwards?
No, you're backwards. What we did is, if you look at that sheet, the, we looked at the off months, and in the five off months, the expenditures were $3,079.21. So the assumption is that if you took that amount of money for five months and interpolated that up to 12 months, that's what it costs for security lights, the parking lot lights, et cetera, et cetera. So that's roughly about $600 per month. So the $73.90, $10 is the approximate cost for, call it, general park lighting. And then the $12,000, the remainder, would be the portion that is attributable to lighting the ball fields.
On top of the $73.90?
On top, right. So during the...
In addition to?
Correct. So during the, so every month, we're paying roughly $600 for parking lot lightings, and we didn't factor anything in if, you know, for in the winter, there's, they're on longer than the summer, just on an average of roughly $600 a month.
And the recommended increase was $1.13 per game for that? Because, from my understanding, you charge, they charge $45 for light use per field?
Uh, we, we possibly thought we could increase, make an increase on the field lights, but after discussion with the representative of the softball association, that our fees that we charge in Hudson are considerably higher than New Richmond River Falls, and he requested that we consider keeping the rates the same.
But my question is, the increase you were requesting was $1.13 per field to help alleviate some of the cost?
The original coming from the Park Board?
Well, it's $45 is the current fee, and it says possible increase to $46.13 based on an hour and a half.
That was, I think, that was a typo. I think last, at the last meeting, we calculated the, how many lights per field, what the wattages were, and what a normal game was, an hour and a half. I think we calculated that the cost per game would be $43.16. That was a typo. It should be 43.16. And our current rates are $45, so it's pretty close to being what, they're paying pretty close to what they're using.
And then consider the increase to $30 for the Hudson Boosters?
Uh, the youth games are probably 55 games per year. If we keep all the rates consistent, that would bring in another $550 approximately, if you'd like to keep, you know, all the games, the costs the same. You know, adult softball, school district, Hudson Boosters, we have had a lesser rate for those in the past. Just something to consider.
So during the season, our lighting expenditures are $12,686, is that right, Neil or Tom? During the seventh season, our cost is...
The cost to run those lights.
So $12,686 is our cost.
Right. And during the season, you know, because Public Works Department sends out those bills, we billed for 159 games last year.
Okay, so that's our cost for lighting. And, and the, the people using it during that time, the revenue generated by those people is $19,499. So they're more than paying for the lighting. They're actually paying an additional $6,000 beyond that.
And that, that portion of it would, that we do charge them for field prep and things like that. That was another request by the softball field, Softball Association, that they would like us to consider them doing their own prep work, which I certainly don't have a problem with.
Okay.
We would lose that revenue, but we would not have the time invested or our equipment.
I was just gonna ask you, they would use their equipment. We don't have insurance liability with that. We don't have concerns.
Well, that could be another thing we'd have to look at, if they, that was just a suggestion. That's something we'd have to look at if they would in fact like to do that.
Okay. So Tom, under the expenditures, the contractual services, it's $20,274. What all does that include?
Um, a big portion of, some of that is for the fertilizing, trying to think what other would have underneath contractual.
Water.
The contractual is everything. If you go down to the expenditure detail, any of those that, that are in the 200 range in terms of the numbers, those would total up into that total contractual.
Okay, got it.
So I think in the 300s would be supplies and expenses.
Okay, so that $20,000 includes the lights.
One thing we did remove is, we had a telephone out there. That's under the 225. For $618 per year, we are considering removing that. I don't think that that's necessary. Everyone seems like they have a cellphone, so we'd like to remove that from there. So that would be a $600 savings.
You know, I guess the argument that River Falls is less and New Richmond is less, I don't know what the condition of their fields is. I doubt that a lot of these groups, I don't think the Hudson Church Softball League is gonna go to New Richmond to play. And I don't always like that argument. Sometimes we're told we should raise our rates at the library, because other libraries charge more, and now we're supposed to charge less because everyone else is charging less. We have our own expenses associated with the field. You know, I think we've taken a lot of pride in it. It's, it's a great, you know, ballpark. And I just think it's important that whatever costs are incurred related to the softball fields, that it's covered by, you know, the revenue that comes in, so...
Would the 1138 from concessions be additional revenue, Tom?
Um...
Does concession revenue is 1138?
I don't know where he's talking.
Currently, currently, all the concession revenues are put into the Park Improvement Fund.
Okay.
And that fund, I don't have the balance in that, but there's not a significant amount of money in that fund. Those have been, you know, spent in prior years. As you, as you can see, that those funds were used, I think, for field improvements in 2011 and the roof in 2012, and that pretty much drained those funds.
So we are making improvements with the funds that we get from the, you know, the sales at the concessions.
And we do have a playground up there, is that right?
I'm sorry?
Isn't there playground equipment up there at the Grandview Park?
Yes.
So there's a playground.
Yep.
And people use it for other activities.
And also, some of that, there's also a junior football fields that are being utilized by the lacrosse teams now, and so that's something to consider also.
The lacrosse teams from, is there a separate league? Or is it the school?
It's a school. It's non-sanctioned at this point, but, you know, it's still part of the high school program.
I'd like the move for approval on the Park Board recommendation to remain at Grandview Park rates, 2012 rates, with no increase.
I'll second that.
So we're still in the hole, basically, is what I'm understanding.
Well, we have a...
Lighting is covered. I get that.
Offseason costs, it just, it keeps costing us money even though nobody's there in the winter, or it's, you know what I mean?
Well, what, what, well, I don't, I don't know how much money it costs if they're covering the light. I mean, the lights are the biggest cost, and that's being covered and then some. So where's the excessive offseason costs? Plowing the parking lot, which is paid for by the parking fund? Parking...
I don't even know if we've covered that in here, but there's some security lights in the winter, things like that.
But that's all covered.
But, you know, there's just general use of the parks. I mean, there's other parks that we don't bring any revenue. Webster Park, Williams Park, you know, things like that, that there, we have a general, it's just for general use.
I understand that.
Used by the public. And I think, for the most part, the different teams are making a pretty good effort to pay for, you know, what they use. Doesn't cover all of it, but I think there's a general park. You have to look at that the park is being used by the general public also.
And they've, the adult league has agreed to help you with the maintenance and prepping the fields.
If they would like that.
If it's not a liability thing, yeah. But if it's a liability thing, then we have a problem there. That's not my point, though. My point is, how are we, I just can't understand how, if they're paying more in lighting than what we even need, you know, how we're in such a hole.
One thing that we could do is, and we mentioned last time, we could maybe separate, somehow get, get different circuits, or some, where we can monitor the lights even closer. And they pay for whatever they use, they'll be paying for. If there's some way we can isolate each field and get some kind of a meter on that, it's, charge them that way, and then we'd know for sure they'd be paying exactly what they use.
I don't think the lights are the problem, though.
Actually, the lights are the problem.
They are.
It looks like it.
If you look at the lit number of games and divide that by the cost of lighting, you come up to that, all the way on the right-hand side, the 79.79.
Oh, yeah.
That's roughly, you know, so it's costing us roughly $80 per game that we're billing for to, to have lights on those fields.
And we're charging 45.
Right.
Yeah, that's where it's coming from.
Huh. I missed that.
Lights. Can we get better bulbs up there? Cheaper?
LEDs.
Well, I mean, maybe I'm off, but it seems like we're spending a ton of money in the offseason to light this area. How much, do we really need all those lights? Because they're costing money to operate. I mean, it's right this time of day up there. I mean, is anyone using that park right now?
We could probably take the, you know, undo the security lighting around there if you wish. I know there's parking lot lights out in the parking lot. We could...
I don't think you should do that.
The irony of security lighting and undoing it, to me, just doesn't make sense. I wouldn't wanna undo security lighting.
But that's where some of the costs are coming from, is for the security lighting, the parking lot lighting.
Come on. I mean, now it's common sense we're getting into here.
I'm just saying, are there some lights that don't need to be on in the winter? That's all I'm asking.
No, I, I get what you're saying. I just don't wanna handle, take off the security.
No, just shut it all down.
I mean, I know that they didn't dig into it deep enough, but, you know, we have a lot longer darkness in the winter, and it's common sense, you know, it's...
All right, we have motion, and we have a second to approve the Grandview Park rates as, at the 2012 level. Is there further questions or further discussion?
I think it needs to be revisited next year after they're, you know, if they are involved in the field prep. I just think we need to look at it again. It's a unique park.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Motion carries four to two. Do we have any communications items from any other person? Is it here, Randy?
Nope.
The administrator's not here. Nancy, you have anything?
Nothing.
I don't have anything. Other, is there a motion to adjourn?
We have the appointment you gotta talk about.
You have what?
The appointment to the community board.
What's that?
Community access board appointment.
I don't got that.
Am I the only one who has that?
Yeah. I think you're the only one who has it. We already did that.
When did we do that?
When did we, that last meeting?
Yeah, shows my memory. That was in my packet.
Move to adjourn. I'll second.
Motion to adjourn, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.